Well.
Anybody should need to come in, I'm gonna ask one of you guys down there to let them in, if that works for you.
How do we do that?
Uh.
Oh, over there, sure.
Just, yeah, do you want the?
Yeah, if that's easy, where did?
It was clipped the deal, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it remote?
Wireless.
Well, you'll hear a ding when somebody comes in.
But I don't need to be connected?
No.
Cool.
No, remember I had it upside down the other day? And you're like, that's why it's not working anymore.
I know, but it was plugged in. Okay. So. Got recording in progress, so that must have at least it's five fifty-nine now, recording in progress, so he's gonna note that.
Yeah. Okay, it is six P M. I call this special meeting of the Halifax Select Board to order. It's November fourth, twenty twenty-four. And this meeting is being recorded. We um. We have no one online yet. We have Rhonda, Karen, Randy, and Edie here in person. There is Tristan. Admit him.
So I go.
Just go to the admit.
Oh, up here? Oh, there it is, thank you.
Yep. We'll wait till it says he's connected, let me hear him. Hi Tristan, can you hear us okay?
Hi Edie, yes, hi Karen, hi Rhonda.
Hey Randy.
Hi, and in the room, we also have Mike Fornier and Stephanie Pike, who I hope is. Is to take some minutes for us, and we're just now admitting Bob Ture into the waiting room.
Coming.
In the waiting room.
I. Should be admitted.
We'll wait to say, make sure he's connected to the audio. Hello Nancy.
Hi.
How are you? Welcome. We're just getting started, we're waiting for. Bob Ture to be connected to the audio. But it's really slow. Bob, let us know when you can hear us. There, it looks like you got on. Bob, can you hear us okay? You can type something into the chat if you can.
Yes.
Thank you, alright, it looked like it took a long time for you to connect to audio, so I was waiting for that. Thank you for joining us. Um. We are just, we just did the call to order, and the first part of the agenda is to look at changes and additions to the agenda. I would like to make a comment about recording, I'd like to add that first thing here. And then, there is no current need for the executive session, so that's going to be stricken from this. And are there any other suggestions or changes? Um, we've got Joan Livingston, Livingston, Joan Livingston in the waiting room too.
One moment. Trying.
Okay, welcome Joan. Can you hear us okay? Okay, I don't hear you Joan, but if you have anything, you can also try to use the chat if you can't speak verbally, we'll try to keep an eye on that. Any other changes or additions to the agenda?
Uh, no, it just looks like, I know Mike has a fire department meeting, so if we can make sure we.
Okay.
Cover as much as we can while Mike's available.
Awesome, alright. So, first thing, changes and additions to the agenda.
I also had one thing, it was gonna be towards the end, and it's just, I'd like to provide a quick update on the RFP for the Hatch School Road. It'll, it'll, it'll be quick, it's really just a matter of.
Right.
penciling in some dates.
Since you mentioned that, I actually also got a last minute email. That I wanna talk about. We have a meeting tomorrow, so, meeting prep for tomorrow, just to discuss that this came in, I don't know that we can. It's, uh, yeah, it's, I'll share the, I'll share a piece of correspondence, I guess, and we can talk about whether it's something we can get on a future agenda.
So do you wanna stick that at the, at the back under?
Yeah.
Hearing visitors or whatever.
P in the future. Meeting request.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so on to the recording. I am acknowledging that the last meeting, which I was busy with lots of different things, I didn't decline or did not, didn't decline, I. Forgot to hit the record button for our Zoom account, and therefore there is no recording for the last meeting. It was an oversight, it was not deliberate in any way. And. The remedy that I tried to put into place for this meeting, that unfortunately didn't seem to work technically, is that there's a setting within Zoom. That you can use that's supposed to automatically record a meeting. When we came in and started this meeting today, I expected it would automatically start recording, it did not, so I'm gonna have to check further on the technical capabilities for that. I noted that someone also put a little note on our owl here to remind us to do that. But at this point, you know, it's a manual process to get that started, I will keep trying to find a tech solution, so that it doesn't happen again. It is to the, the board uses those recordings, and we, we welcome the public using those recordings, it is not something. We, uh, we would ever wanna be without now, actually, I, I find I enjoy going back and refreshing my memory on different aspects of it.
And, and I'll also raise my hand, because I typically try and say what time the recording starts, and I. Must, my head was in three different places too, so I didn't do that, and I actually didn't recognize it until the very end of the meeting, when I usually say recording stopped, and then we realized all of this.
Yeah.
There was no recording.
The record button is right close to the end meeting button, and, and even during the meeting, I said something to somebody, I was teasing somebody, I was like, you know, this is being recorded, right? So clearly I thought that this had happened, right, so. Um, so, just acknowledging that, that it is an open meeting law violation at this point, because we, recording was required starting July first, but, but mistakes happen. Okay, so this meeting is, is being recorded, I can see it up there on the screen. Uh, first thing that we have then is under old business is to talk about considering refurbishment option for the greater. And I budgeted about ten minutes for this, Rhonda, would you be able to keep some time for us?
Yeah.
Because we've got a lot of stuff on the agenda, and some of it's gonna be hefty discussion.
Okay, you said ten minutes, okay.
Yeah, ten minutes. Alright, so the reason I put this first is because, at the moment. We know that our greater replacement schedule says it will be replaced in twenty twenty-five. And this is the largest piece of equipment that we have. And it is something that, I think I informally said to Mike, hey, is it possible to consider refurbishment for the greater? So that, we don't have. Um, so we have an understanding of what that cost might be. If that's an option to extend the life of that piece of equipment. So I don't, it, it just feels to me like, having as much information upfront as we can. Will help us make a better decision when we get to the point of saying, does this need to go into the twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget, or does it not? And, you know. I like having a lot of data. And then if we have the refurbishment costs again, we can either budget for that. Or we can decide if we put something on the, on the warning next year for a long term loan.
Next year, you mean, March twenty-five coming up?
Yeah, yeah. Questions, thoughts, comments? Still feasible, you think, technically, to get somebody to?
Well, I'm sure that, in Caterpillar.
Yeah.
You can.
Yeah.
Heck, so.
Okay.
Sure, feasible, it's just gonna be. I think it was, don't quote me on price, but I think it was like a thousand dollars. So it's just gonna be a thousand dollars to, to get a price.
Yeah.
They have to come out and look at everything and.
Yeah, they took pictures, they gave us a pretty detailed list, and I do remember that there was a cost involved for that with the excavator as well, and it was. I think it was more than a thousand, actually, I don't remember what it was, but I was thinking more like two. So. Do we think that that's a good thing to, to consider for the future, as we are, you know, looking at these three large pieces of equipment that. All seem to be. Ending their useful life.
Only thing I, I'm gonna say. Frankly, I guess, is, uh, the greater is probably. Out of the three pieces of equipment in the best shape.
Okay.
So you're gonna get, you're gonna get quite a bit for trade-in on that machine.
Okay. Alright.
That's, just, just food for thought.
Okay. That might also mean the refurbishment costs on his thing.
Well.
Fingers crossed, right? Yeah.
But we haven't actually asked for the refurbishment information on the greater yet, right?
No, that's what I'm asking, does the board want to ask Mike to do that?
Yeah, I mean, I would be supportive of it, just to have, you know, to have the information. The replacement cost, and that's what I'm just pulling up here. Is, that we had in the, actually, that's in the town book, if you've got the town book.
It's what page?
Probably know right what page it's on too. How many hours are on the greater, Mike? Any idea?
Eight to nine thousand.
Yeah, and we figure, is it, you said two thousand twenty-five is the replacement year? Was it twenty-five or twenty-six?
We had target replacement of twenty-six.
Okay.
So at the time when we looked at this, we received a quote in June twenty twenty-three for this of four hundred and forty-five thousand.
For the greater.
And, for the greater. Um, at the time, which was. December first, twenty twenty-three, there were six thousand nine hundred and eighty.
Hours.
Hours.
Yeah.
So that's where, and we bought the original in twenty-eleven at, you know, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand round numbers. And so Stephanie, if you need any of those for the minutes, I can.
Yeah.
Either give them to you now or after the fact, is easy enough, whatever works.
Yeah, what, I have June twenty twenty-three, what was the four hundred and forty-five thousand, that was?
So, yes, so, so the greater. Was originally purchased in twenty-eleven. For roughly two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And. We don't have page numbers. We have a target replacement in twenty twenty-six.
It's eighteen, page eighteen, no, sorry. Yeah.
Yes, page eighteen.
Or. An estimated replacement that we got, we got a replacement quote of four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. In June of twenty twenty-three, so that quotes a year out. And that quote excludes a trade-in. Of, at the time, seventy-five thousand dollars.
It includes that.
Excludes.
That's an estimated.
It was an estimated trade-in, yes, it was an absolute estimated trade-in. Um, but that's also a year old that trade-in based on, at the time, as of December one, twenty twenty-three, of six thousand nine hundred and eighty hours. And the current estimate of hours, Mike, you think, estimate?
Twenty-eight, nine thousand. That, uh, that's a guess.
Understood. You said eight to nine thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, Mike, do you recall if we had two bids for that piece of equipment?
No. I just.
That's fine.
Break the phone.
Yeah, that's fine.
Actually, there might have been two bids. Or done a John Deere and a Cat one.
Yeah, and I went to look for those on Google Docs today, and there wasn't anything. Anything in there.
I know there's something in the filing cabinet.
Yes, I'm sure, I'm sure there is.
Had information, but I don't think I.
Yeah, and I don't have it. I don't have it on here. At, at least in my. I didn't get it as a, as a separate file, so I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's there, but. Unless, unless somebody has a good reason not to get an estimate to refurbish. I'm happy to move that we. Ask for, for refurbishment quote.
I mean, if it's, if, if it is the machine that is in the best shape. Then it seems like it might be a good, a good idea to do that.
I, the John Deere bid is four twenty-nine.
Okay. So my, that's my sense with these estimated replacement costs, we always put the highest of the ones that we've gotten.
Right.
Because again, we don't know if prices are gonna go up or down, but.
And, and we know we're always, we're always at least a year out.
Right.
Of whatever.
Yeah. Okay. So, are you seconding Karen's?
Oh, just making a motion?
She made a motion to.
I'm sorry.
It just, it just wasn't very air kicking.
Okay, um, then yeah, I would make a motion that we do get a bid on that.
For refurbishment.
To refurbish that.
A second.
Okay, so we've got a new motion and a new second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries five zero.
Only thing I will know is, that machine is getting used daily right now, so that's not something that's gonna happen super timely.
Yeah, and, and really what I'm looking for, I think, or what we are looking for, is budget season's coming up, right, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, I don't know that you'll have a, a real number. It all depends when you start your budget.
Yeah, um, and, and that's okay, I mean, what, what we have to have usually is. Um, so this is Jen, who entered the waiting room, we'll try to get her last name, or his last name. So, uh. Where was I?
Budget.
Oh, so budget, and then like, the season that we have, last year it was like. Barely the end of, the end of January that we had to have the warning put together, and, and if we. If we are trying to purchase big pieces of equipment, we can put them in as warning articles to get that extra purchasing. Uh, loan lease or lease time, uh, but, in the meantime, you know, it will be doing budget for equipment. Um, repairs and stuff, and that would be where refurbishment costs would.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think so. But my, what is your best guess on when we might think about? Having one for budget discussions?
It all depends, one, one machine can be at somewhere where they can get to it, look at it.
So you have to take it to them, or they come to?
No, they'll come here. Today, but, then it's gonna take them. I don't know how long, I can't remember how long it took for them to write up all their stuff.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be a few weeks anyway.
Yeah, 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 well, I would expect that. Maybe as long as it's not, you know, like a few months, that, that seems like that would be okay.
They just kinda have to fit it in.
Yeah, 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 we know, we know you'll do your best.
Um, I'm acknowledging Jen, you, you recently joined us, and we would like to have your last name for our minutes, please.
I don't think you need my last name.
Uh, we are in a public meeting and our minutes.
I know, and I live in this town.
Okay, thank you Jen.
Yep.
Alright, so, let's move on to excavator, discuss refurbishment, rental, or purchase and financing, this is a forty minute discussion.
That clock is wrong, we keep taking four.
There is an hour off, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so. We have approval from. The taxpayers to purchase and finance for more than. Five years. An excavator. That was sort of the genesis of, um, this conversation, but in the context of that. Meeting, we did get refurbishment costs as well, which we discussed at an earlier meeting in part. And then the third option that came up was, what if we considered a rental for the excavator? So, the order in which we discuss these is not. As long as we kind of stick to our forty minutes. Is, is not necessarily, um. A requirement to follow this. I will say that Tristan at one point asked if we would have some objectives for why things are on the meeting, on the, on this. And, you know, one of my objectives is, if we are going to put stuff out for bid, I would like to do, I would like to have that motion made. At this point, so that's where, that's why we have a special meeting that's really designed to focus on these issues of large equipment purchases. Which are painful because they're expensive, and because, um, we know that it's complicated to figure out what the right thing to do is. So. Who would like to start with refurbishment?
So there was the refurbishment quotation that came from Cat.
Yeah.
Um, and. You know, originally I was really in favor of doing a refurbishment on that machine, um, because I think it would save money. Although I went, I looked through the, um, their quotation. Um, you know, line by line, and it seemed like there were some things that they did not cover in, in that refurbishment. Um, there was really nothing to, they didn't cover really anything as far as hydraulic motors, or. Um, drive motors, or, uh, transmission type stuff. So, um. I don't know, it's, uh.
And do you remember what the, just to refresh everybody's memory, what the total was, yeah, what we're thinking about?
Total number was. Sorry, there's a lot of pages here.
Yeah, it was like forty pages or something.
Yeah.
It was a big.
Um. The total number was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
And for.
I know, uh.
And as a, as a. Comparative matter on the same basis in the town meeting. That excavator is a two thousand nine model year, was purchased for a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Target replacement is twenty twenty-four, so that's currently. The estimated replacement cost, excluding trade-in, when we did this a year ago, over a year ago, was three hundred and fifty thousand. And that quote also of three hundred and fifty thousand was received June twenty twenty-three. Three hundred and fifty thousand replacement excludes an optimal trade-in at the time of estimate, guestimate of forty thousand. And the current hours as of December first, twenty twenty-three were seven thousand nine twenty-one. Versus the. Hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar, which we'll probably have to refresh, hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar refreshment, but as you point out, if it excludes hydraulics and transmission, those are pretty pricey, right?
Yeah.
And that was, um, based on, again, a detailed service review that was done with photos, et cetera, so they really looked at it and said, these are the things that need doing. Um, but.
For an FYI, that, that pushing nine thousand, I don't know.
Is it, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then the other, um, the other aspect of this refurbishment discussion was that. One of the pieces that wears most quickly is the. Bucket, and there was a separate quote of a, for sales to get thirty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. Would be replacing that bucket to one that would be less likely to break, or to need.
Two buckets and a coupler.
Two buckets and a coupler, that would be less likely to wear in the same way that this one did. So, those two elements together. Make refurbishment a fairly pricey endeavor.
It looks like it was. Up for the two, roughly a hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Yeah. Um. Frankly, my, my concern with refurbishment is and remains. We don't have a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in the budget to mess with, right, and. I don't, but we talked about it briefly, we, we, we did. Have a meeting with M and T Bank, but it ended up focusing. Somewhat on this, and we can, we can speak to that here, I think, when we get to the purchase and financing perspective. But I, I just don't know that we can get a loan for something like that, and that's a big chunk of money. Um, and so, you know, we either have to tax people, that's how we, that's how we get money. Or we have to, you know, figure out if, if in fact some bank or somebody else will loan us money. To refurbish an old piece of equipment. Um, so, I don't have, I was hoping to have the answer for that question by now, but the old, the other. Issue we've been dealing with, with the bank has been taking longer and being more complicated than we thought. So. As it sounds to me, tell me if I'm wrong, like we're maybe moving away from the refurbishment option to discuss.
Yeah, do we have it, can we get, do you have, can we tell Phil something, your sense for renting a piece of equipment like this, what is the, because we would still have the. I guess we'd still have the excavator limping along on some basis, of course, we're gonna have to.
I just was gonna quickly add that, um, what you said, yes, I think it would be probably hard to get a loan for an older machine to refurbish it at that point. Which again, could be the same thing with the previously discussed greater as well. Um. But to also add to what you said, we are obviously going to have to tax people to purchase a piece of equipment as well, so.
That, that is very true, and, and.
The only good thing about that is, not that I'm necessarily for that big of a number.
Yeah.
Um, the only thing that would make it easier is obviously getting a loan on a new piece of equipment, banks are easier to do. It's easier to do that with a bank, I understand that.
Correct, and, and just, again, from a. Government finance perspective, if we are taxing. People. One year, and then the next year, and the next year, and the next year, and that amount is, let's say, fifty thousand dollars, right? The people who live in town that year are getting fifty thousand dollars worth of value from that piece of equipment, the next year they're doing the same. If people, if more people come into town, they're, they're still paying for a piece of equipment that's really important to them, even though it's five years old at that point, right?
So, that's sort of normal municipal finance, people move in and out all the time, so you can't, it's hard to.
It's, yeah.
Match. That kind of equipment finance with residency.
Yeah, and, and also, I mean, I, again. Um, I know that I like to live my life with as little debt as possible, but it's, it's not necessarily considered unhealthy. For a town who, who have debt, because that's the purpose of it, is right, to spread.
Yeah, and it amortizes that cost out.
Right.
Uh, uh, you know, through its useful life.
Right.
Um, or at least through a significant proportion of its, of its useful life.
And we have some equity in it, in the end. Um, right, so we can turn around and take the, the old piece of equipment and try to get something for it.
But what are our thoughts on, you, you know, if we can rent it, because it is a piece of equipment that we use a lot, so. You know, renting can get out of hand too, cost-wise, uh, because obviously. We'll be paying, whoever we're renting it from, right, if we're leasing this equipment on some basis. Somebody's getting a profit margin on what we're paying, right, because they've gotta cover their depreciation, they've gotta cover whatever their financing is. Costs plus depreciation plus their replacement, so. Depending on what the term is, it can or can't be, you know.
So I was hoping to, this morning, get a chance to go to the town garage early and talk with Mike and with, um. Ben, but I did not get a chance to do that. Um, I wanted to bring this up to, to them a little bit about this too, but. So, the idea of renting came from a conversation I had with Stanley Janowski. Who is the Whitingham, uh, road boss, I guess is the correct word. Um. And. What they do is, they have a backhoe. And what they do is, when they're doing their, you know, their ditch work, or their culverts, or whatever, they try to schedule that to a window of time. And for two months, three months, whatever that may be. During that time, they rent a machine to do that, a wheeled excavator. The, a lot of the ditch work they're doing is, um, you know, there's grants involved, and usually. Uh, a portion of the grant money will go towards rental of a machine, or a machine, so. That's what they do, and, uh, for the three months, on average, that they, uh, rent a machine, it's an average of fifteen. It's an average of fifteen thousand dollars. Um.
For the three months or for eight months?
For the three month time. Um and I've usually, Stanley said, the last time I talked to him, five to ten. Five to ten thousand of that is usually covered by grants. Um. I reached out to him again and, you know, to try to get a little more information and I did not hear back from him today or yesterday, so I was hoping I would, but. Um anyway.
So can you repeat the amount for three months again?
Yes. Um he, he said that around fifteen thousand dollars is the cost for a three-month rental. Now, the only downside of this is, one, as was said, we don't have equity. Two. Um we don't have a new machine on hand all the time, which um. You know, we could still, we still have the machine we have. I understand it's getting older, I understand it's, there's, there's hours. And I understand that the older machine gets, there's more repair. Um this is just an idea that I had to, you know, try to, try to save some money and see if we could make this work for a while. Um so, so I'd like some input from you, yes.
The excavator gets run from April to December pretty much a daily. It's not just a three-month thing. I mean, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus here, but our ditching jobs are. A little more extravagant than Whitingham. I'm not like, I said, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus. You call any state, state guy from any of these better backroads, grants and aids. They're calling us and want our permission to use our pictures online because they're ecstatic what we're doing. I mean, taxpayers hate it. But the state is loving it because we're doing stuff for what they want.
And I can, I can confirm what he said. I got an email today from um from Wyndham Regional and the state talking about. The really impressive work that our crew does. Um with all of this, with ditching and, and, and all the road work, so I can definitely confirm that. It's not here, as he's not expressing here, say, just as a. As a public record matter.
I mean, not personally, I'm, I'm not in favor of renting it. I totally understand where Randy's coming from trying to save money, but. I mean, this time of year, once stuff gets ready for winter and we're done cleaning leaves and somewhat grading the road. Start right in doing our next better backroad project that when we start cutting trees and. An excavator is huge for cutting tree. I mean, you can do it with a backhoe, but it's gonna.
Oh no, an excavator is way handier than a, than a backhoe for a lot of them, so I understand.
You know, Whitingham don't really cut trees. I mean, I'm not saying they don't, but they, they don't. Take it however you want.
Does anybody else have any ideas on the, the rental thing or any other comments besides me?
I don't know.
And Mike, I don't, I don't mind you talking up our roads, Mike, and what you do, you know, go ahead, tell, tell us what you're doing for us and how good the job you're doing. I think it's important. To, to own it. Um I mean, I do see you at, you know, I see the excavator in use all the time. I would be hesitant to, I think that it's a great idea, Randy. I'm. Hesitant to throw another sort of consideration in the works, you know, because if you're, we're using it. Nine months out of the year, and then suddenly we're gonna say, okay, it's not gonna be available for part of the time, but that complicates. Um all the projects that complicate, so Mike's gotta manage the work. So I think there are some downsides to that, as much as I would have liked it. Um and I do think they're doing a great job on the ditches and the trees and. Our roads are wider, more cleared and get more sun and that's better quality roads, it's better maintenance, lower cost. So there's a, a benefit to that.
Yeah, I think I, I would, I would concur with what Tristan says, it's, it's, it's a very difficult choice, but. The expenditure now and the really great work Mike has done and the team has done over the last couple of years. You know, should be going forward, reducing our costs through mud season and some of this other stuff. I think we still got a hump to get over. Um but I think, I don't know if it makes sense to get ahold of M and T. To find out, you know, what, what their finance. Possibilities are. Um again, it's something if we can stretch it out because it's got a fifteen-year, it's a fifteen-year life. Um and stretch it out kind of beyond. Because if we need, if it's three months, if we need it six or nine months, you know, if you just sort of extrapolate on the fifteen thousand. Does that get us in the neighborhood of what we might be paying for, right? I, I, we'd have to try and figure out what the. What the apples and apples comparison is. Um and so we've got, we've got your information, which is super useful. But we're kind of still blind on the other side.
So how much of our taxes are gonna go off if we buy all this stuff? You're gonna have a mutiny on your hands, people aren't, are gonna be mad.
Yeah, I mean, I.
They went up a lot last year.
They did, they did.
Thing you gotta figure out here is you gotta have a plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, need a capital plan.
Taxes and nothing done on your road.
Oh no, you've got, you've got two big equipment.
Though is, is everything's going through the roof. So you gotta get on a plan of saying, we wanna be somewhere in five years, ten years, wherever your plan is, or. Do we wanna just keep trying to go by the seat of our pants and keeping taxes low? I mean, I don't wanna pay no more taxes than the next guy, but it's like.
I know, but that's too big, big purchases, you know, and people are gonna.
Stuff. I mean, you can keep everything you have, but you're gonna dump. Thousands of dollars into fixing these things, then, I mean, plus the downtime.
I'm just saying, it's a lot of money.
Figure out whatever you wanna do here.
Yeah, no, it really is. It is an awful lot of money. But we're in a, we're in a the uncomfortable position where we're at the tail end of everybody rolling the ball forward.
Well, I know.
To down it beyond its useful life.
I'm not saying you don't need the equipment.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not saying.
You need a plan. If you want low taxes, that's fine, but when people call and expect stuff done. Like now and stuff broke and they gotta, you, you know, there's one hand washes the other, you can't just say, you know.
Yeah, nothing happens in a vacuum, sadly.
Well, that's what the people wanted, so they voted for it, right?
They did.
They did, yeah, there was a vote and people said, you know, purchase and financing was okay, but there were, you know. There were questions prior and people saying like, well, are you gonna consider the refurbishing thing? And we'd said, yes, we will consider that. But it wasn't, you know, again, I think it's gonna be harder to get the money for it because you're gonna be asking for it all next March. Like, you know, you need it all at this point, right?
Can we, what is our, I guess, timeline to make a decision like, okay. Here we're gonna fund the refurbishment, here we're gonna fund rental, or we're gonna. See if we can do something on a, on a financing, because I think the thing to do is try and. Figure out a little spreadsheet and have everything on an apples-to-apples basis, but that's gonna involve updating the refurbishment, maybe. Getting information on the.
Escavator?
On the excavator.
I, I don't feel like that's probably the, I mean, as much as it was. You know, that doesn't seem like a.
Doesn't seem like it makes sense.
Cost-effective. I didn't think it would be that much.
All right, if we're gonna take that off the table, then.
Yeah.
We should just know that and then, I mean, because I'm happy to call the bank and say, okay, give us a proposal. We didn't wanna get into it with them because we were really focused on the.
Well, and.
Fifty-five hundred.
Yeah, and I think, I think my thing, I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus my comments right now on the rental, because I wanna kind of give some input on that space. Um the rental option for me, not only do we have then. These operational costs that are again, you know, taxing people right now and no equity being built. But it, the other thing that I've heard that would concern me is like, oh, and then we're gonna need to at some point get rid of this excavator and replace it with a backhoe. So it's just, it's like a replacement of another kind of equipment ultimately, right? If you, if you were to go in that, that plan, right? And the, and the current excavator, you know, really truly bit the dust three years out and we didn't wanna put whatever amount of money in it. Then you would need to be looking at purchasing a separate piece of equipment, which was a backhoe.
And how much does a backhoe cost?
You know, we were, we were, we weren't looking at a backhoe and whether we could use our ARPA funding for that at one point. And so I think somebody had priced it out at seventy-five or something like that, but.
No.
Okay, yeah, I think what, I think it was used, yeah.
Ninety thousand.
Ninety?
Here's a two thousand nineteen.
Oh yeah, it was ninety thousand, exactly.
Four twenty, the, 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 four thousand hours already on it for seventy-seven five.
Yeah, so we're still looking at needing to do that. And, and the other aspect of this um. Is we are a small town. And each transaction that we have to deal with, like now we've not, now gotta go rent something or now we've gotta go buy a new piece of equipment. These things are all taking a lot of time and, and energy, right? So from one perspective, you know, a purchase, an outright purchase. Is we go, you know, we put it out for bid, we review the bids. Let me be clear, we do not have to buy anything when we get the bids. If there is, if there is, if it either goes above our. What the taxpayer said we could pay, or we don't find it meets our specs. You know, we might find a used piece of equipment, I suspect, but I, you know, like, that might be an option, I don't know. But we put it out for bid, we say, these are the specs that we have, maybe they have one that's, you know, rented from somebody for. You know, for three months of the year and, and the next year they're like, well, we just wanna sell this piece of equipment. Um but we end up at that point not having to think about this for, you know, a little while, right? For, for the period.
For an FYI, the last machine you bought was a rental machine.
Okay, uh so I wasn't, I'm not.
It had like five, six, eight, I forget, a hundred thousand hours.
The, the machine, the excavator we have now?
The one, and that, that price that we got it for was. Yeah, so I mean, again, that might be, and you know, again, the, the, the price, the estimates that we gave. Um during both our informational session about the equipment and, you know. While we know the bids were somewhat aged, um. We, you know, we did put the higher amount, so it may be feasible that it will be less than that. We just simply aren't gonna know that until we go up to bid. We're not gonna know what the price of it is.
Roughly, if you buy a brand new machine through CAT at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Ten-year annual upfront lease purchase payment would be forty-four to forty-five thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, so um. But what you said, you just said something that was very interesting to me. Oh, so I'm gonna move into purchasing for just a minute. You just came off of your phone and you said a ten-year.
Cause that's what they called it. I'm pretty sure that's as far as they go.
Okay, cause when I was trying to put together the information for the informational meeting. At that time, I actually asked both you and Patty to tell me.
And I told you seven because that's what the other dealership told me was seven.
Okay, cool.
This one does say ten.
And we, and we've had, we have ten in here on our finance schedule for quote terms, we're all ten-ten except for the loader, which was seven.
So what, so why I'm so intrigued by this though, right? Is you said forty to forty-four thousand?
Forty-four, forty-five.
Forty-four to forty-five, all right, so that is again higher.
Trade.
Okay, yeah, so that's higher, or that, sorry, that number is lower than, than the estimates I was giving people when we were asking.
About.
About purchasing, right? I mean, you know, again, all of it is, all of it is to give people a ballpark and idea. But that, if we can get a ten-year um agreement for purchasing. Um it's gonna spread that cost out and it's gonna make that, what are we looking at for this December? It's gonna make that a little bit.
Yeah.
More palatable to us, I think.
And I think the more we can try, get as much information as we can and try and build it into these schedules so that we have. A little more of a kind of annual comparison.
Yeah.
Um we'll just, I think, feel better about whatever decision we end up having to make. Whatever decision we make is gonna be a tough one.
The um, I think when we last met about this, I had some, some spreadsheets pulled together as well. Um and I tried to come up with a little bit more realistic pricing, but I didn't have anybody who said the um. You know, that the ten-year was even feasible, al- although the original quote from. From one of the two vendors did say forty to forty-five, you know, to be a outcome to that. Um but I can't remember what I was gonna say about the spreadsheet I had before. See if I can find anything. Anyway, um others, keep, keep talking, keep talking about purchase and finance.
Go back to the bank, that's all.
Um so one thing I'll, so I'll, let's talk a little bit about the financing aspect as well.
So, so I can do the equipment grading, what we got from Paul Black at the bank. Was that obviously they wanna match the term to the useful life and originally he said that graders, excavators and loaders were all seven years. We explained that we were looking for fifteen years and we had a conversation that went back and forth. And they said, wow, the maximum could be, he kind of inched his way up to ten years, which is consistent with what, with, with what Mike said. Um but if it has a fifteen-year life and we get a ten-year loan, that's what we did with the grader and the excavator. We had fifteen-year. Um life and then we paid it off in twenty fifteen. So what Mike said he would do is that he would go back. Um and, and we'd have to look at our line and now that we have a, a line of credit, if you will, and I'm using that term, you know. Carefully, um they've already done um an underwriting for us. We have that escrow. Which is sort of a small, smallish number. Now that we have that, they're able to. Do a schedule for all of our pieces of equipment. Um and he can go back and if we ask him, we just haven't had this conversation and we can say, okay, look, this is. This, this is, this is, this is what we need, you know, we have these pieces of equipment, what kind of financing can you give us? And then maybe that will help us have a little more concrete, at least we'll know what that bogey is and then. Then we just will have to figure out what piece of equipment might, might match that if it's something that seemed at all. Palatable to the, to, to, to the town. But I, I would have to do that, I think, rather than ask Patty to do it. Um just because it's been a bit of a. Struggle um getting information, I think, is out of M and T. Like I spent half the day today trying to get a post-closing document that they kept sending me the wrong one over and over and over again. Wow. Um so it's really just a matter of you just gotta pay attention to the details, stay on them and that, so it's doable and it's something, you know, it's something I could do, but I just don't wanna. I don't want, I'll volunteer to do it rather than ask Patty and Patty can be my backup as we're pulling information.
So you would um said at one point something about like almost getting, going out to get an RFP. P for financing, right? And I don't know in the past um how exactly it gets arranged. Through the, the vendors that we purchase from, um but that's my understanding of what those other ten-year loans were. Um.
Yeah, vendor loans, you mean, yeah, 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 as opposed to bank financing.
As opposed to bank financing.
Correct.
I do wanna emphasize when you said that they said, oh, the useful life is seven years, I was just like.
Well, no, no, that was that guy from the bank and he didn't, we had a conversation that went on and he did back off of that.
Yeah, yeah, so um it was just like, not, not around here, they don't last seven years, they last twice that.
Right, no, and he, 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 he backed off that pretty quick, so.
I, I was a little, I was a little astounded by that, but I will say that the um, the numbers that Patty had given before. Which were um. From, you know, from the bank and the, and the, and the rate from the bank. I think the bank rate was better. Than the one from, that we got from the dealer. Um but again, the, there's both that question of. How can we spread this expense out for the taxpayers over the useful life of the vehicle as best we can?
While we're training some trade-in, while retaining.
Yeah, and it does.
With warranties and that kind of stuff, I guess.
Yeah, I think the piece, I, I'm not finding my spreadsheet again, um but I, I think one thing that I mentioned before is just. The amount of debt that we have as a town. Did go down because this equipment schedule is uneven, right? Somehow or rather, between whether, and I think at one point we had a piece of equipment that burned up. You know, somehow or rather, we've got our three biggest pieces of equipment that are all. Year, year, year.
So like every fifteen years, it's gonna happen again.
Yeah, and, and then, and then over time, the interest rate's gonna go down further. Um so. The, the whole um, the whole bit of this is just really to say. What we're doing is. Challenging because we did have a large increase last year. We know that we had that large increase because we had a. Miscalculation the previous year. And so we have a little bit of wiggle room if what we. Do or what we think about doing when it comes to budget season is saying something like. Instead of let's level fund services, and if we say, we wanna actually. Instead of let's level fund services, and if we say we wanna actually. Go for a ten percent cut in the budget or level fund the budget or whatever, right? We do have some wiggle room there that makes me not start sweating bullets over forty five thousand dollar a year. These equipment that I know is gonna have a long useful life.
Does, is there support on the board to try and get information on what if we bought something financed it? And at least we'll know if it's on some kind of apples and apples basis, uh, uh, cause we'll have to have some kind of a, you know, loan amortization schedule, so. We can put something there that's like, okay, well, we're thinking we're paying X, the next one will be. Y, and again, that was principle, that that schedule, we didn't have any interest, cause we're just estimating, um. But we confirm it up, cause it's hard to, I I, what I. Worry about doing is making such important decisions on information that's a year to two, too old. Cause if we got these estimates, you know, in twenty three and we got, you know, and then we'll be, you know, we'll be in twenty five and then. It it just.
One of my.
Then we're shocked when we get the real stuff, like, how could, how could we be off so much?
I was gonna say, we're not gonna be able to do anything without getting a, an immediate quote, and again, maybe we can find a machine that is. With a rental that has just a few hours on it or something that's a little bit less.
At least we'll know what our bogey is that we're looking for, right?
And and see what the bank says, I mean, you gotta, you gotta get numbers before you can really do anything anyway, so.
Yeah.
But but I would argue that we can go out to bid, start that process, which is gonna take. A couple of months by the time we get the specs pulled together, advertise. Put a date that it need, the bids need to be in by and actually get something that is tangible that we can purchase. And we think this is not gonna be something where we purchase it and don't get it for a year, right? We think these pieces of equipment, we will.
Last I was told, it was six months.
Six months, so it's still six months, so let's parallel track these questions, like, let's not. If if we are, if we think we, uh, we certainly have the voter authority to go put it out to bid. Again, we don't have to buy it if nothing comes back that meets our interests. But let's get that going and then the financing piece, you know, the the caterpillar people are in the. John Dew people are not necessarily gonna give us yet another set of quotes about something we might someday buy, right? Like, if we're going to buy something, then they're willing to give us a real quote for what that will really cost, real, really cost. Sorry? And we can then move ahead and then in six months, maybe we'll have some equipment that, an excavator that can be. Used and, you know. Hopefully, we won't have any major repairs needed in that timeframe.
Is, is there any rea- so there's no reason to parallel path with the bank until we're?
Well, you, we can, but I, but I'm, what I'm, what I would like to have tonight is a decision. Of whether we're going to go ahead and put these, this excavator and then we'll talk next about the loader. Out out on an RFP, we wanna get, we wanna get a purchase going.
Quick question for Mike, um, at one point you had mentioned about, can't remember what it was, but it was a, uh. Like a group through the state, yes, Sourcewell.
Do they do large pieces of equipment?
Absolutely do.
Okay.
And is that something we should look into to see if maybe we can get a better deal on something, okay?
Is there a fee for using that kind of?
I think there is, but the saving, I mean, that's if you're buying three pieces of equipment in three years, I mean, and the savings is gonna be. I mean, usually the savings on one piece of equipment is astronomical, so.
So if we put something out to bid, but also try to get this Sourcewell thing started, I'm I'm not, I, you know. Is is, or can we only bid, get, try to get the bids through them, is that?
From what I understand, uh, it's something that you're a part of, either they bid it for you.
Okay.
Or there's just like, if you buy something and you say you're a Sourcewell, if these people accept Sourcewell, there's like a percentage of.
Yeah, Mike sent me and I have the email somewhere, I thought I had it, I saw it, actually, I looked at it today, um. And I thought I brought it with me, but I think.
I know for a fact, Reedsboro bought their excavator with it, and I know it's town and Guilford buys.
And those are two towns that are budget, yeah, yeah, Reedsboro budgetarily closer to us than.
And I think we have to, you know, we have to join Sourcewell, we have to, you know, become part of the.
Okay.
Part of the group, so so I, as my recollection was when I looked it up last time, um, so we'll just have to. Decide if we wanna explore that and, you know, start parallel pathing all of these things.
Yeah, how are we doing on time?
Oh, we're done.
Okay, we're done, no, we're not, we're not done.
We're done.
Okay, alright, so we're not done, but, um.
Sorry, I'm sorry, he said Reedsboro and Guilford.
Yeah. Alright, so, um.
So can I just quickly say then, we should, we should try to figure out more about Sourcewell and look into it, it seems like.
That, yeah, and to my mind, this question is, can that be a separate motion outside of? Are we trying to go out to bid for an excavator?
Is there, do we have, is there any opportunity to do it linearly, timing wise, or do we have, are we so time constrained that we gotta do both? And parallel path?
I don't know how long it will take to sign up for something like Sourcewell, um.
And I can look into it and find out.
Yeah, but I, again, how many, how, I guess my, uh, and I'm, I'm. I'm pushing in part because we've got budget season coming up, we've, this is like the third conversation we've had about, about this. You know, are we ready as a board to say that we wanna purchase this X, we wanna go out to bid for an excavator? If we save that, it doesn't tie our hands to waiting until we have Sourcewell. But it also doesn't, doesn't tie our hands, like, what if we start exploring Sourcewell, it takes two weeks to figure it out and then we find out, oh, well, for some reason, maybe the fee is too high, right? We haven't budgeted for any fees to be part of any buying club, but.
Uh, I don't think the fees would be that high that we would.
So, so.
That would put us off of multi-hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah.
Um, savings.
It definitely seems like an avenue to to potentially save us some money.
Yeah, I think we should, and I think we should, I mean, as a, as a practical matter, Mike has been asking us to look at Sourcewell. For a year.
There was, I mean, there was an email about it and there was some information, I think he probably has some information.
Yeah, and I've got it, I just, I'm sure I have it in the bag here, um, so I think we should do that regardless, because whether we use it for. This equipment or some other equipment or whatever it is.
Yeah.
I think it, it just seems like as a, as an administrative matter, we should participate, and then. Once we have that set up, as we're doing other things, if it applies, we can. We can look into it, um.
Okay.
I just don't know exactly how it works, so I can't be a huge advocate, but if other towns are using it, Mike advocates for it, I think.
Here's what I would say, if we're not, i- if we're not committing to paying anything. Then certainly we can ask if somebody is willing to follow up and, you know, what would it take to sign up for Sourcewell? I don't think we need a motion for that, right, we're not buying anything, we're just taking our time to to do something.
To look into something and then if it, then if we find out, oh, in order to join, it costs.
Yeah, so, I.
Okay, he he might, but he sent me the stuff, I just have to go, I just have to find it, right?
Okay, and then separately from that, I would entertain a motion to go out to bid for an excavator.
But before we do that, can I? Can I go look into Sourcewell and see what I can find?
What, I guess I'm questioning, if we don't go with Sourcewell, are we still gonna buy this excavator is my question?
I think it's two different things, and I think Sourcewell gives us the opportunity to look at a loader, to look at a backhoe, to look at whatever. So I just sort of view that as we need a website, we need to be part of a buying group, we need, just as a. Practical matter, um, to manage what we're doing, yeah, so it's not, it, the excavator, the loader might be the very first. You know, button to push, but I I think it's a totally different thing.
Okay, so, um, we don't need to have a motion for Sourcewell, as I understand it. Is there someone who is willing to put forth a motion that we are ready to purchase? An excavator and go up to bid for that, there will be steps that need to be taken after that, which will possibly include or may well include Sourcewell. But I'm like, I would like to start the process of getting a purchase going for the excavator.
I'm moving to go to, uh, bid for the excavator.
Okay, can I have a second?
What are we doing, um, to, sorry, sorry Tristan, one second, so we're on a, Tristan's just. Moved that we look to find, get a bid for the excavator. Um, just the getting a bid does not obligate us. If if we get a number that that is unfeasible. But we have to have some numbers, I think, in front of us so that we can compare them to whatever the other options are. And what does the long-term plan look like, because the numbers that we have now are eighteen months old.
Oh, um, so I'm gonna second Tristan's motion. Keep the conversation going, um. Karen, what you just said was something about options and I I guess I'm unclear what you mean by that.
Bank financing, Sourcewell finance, you know, Sourcewell, there's, you know, we said we're gonna explore buying something, either buy it from the vendor. Either you you buy it through bank financing, you get it used, you go through Sourcewell. It all is buying it and the question is, what are you buying and how are you paying for it? So, but you you need to have, that's what I view as options, right, cause if we're gonna buy it. On what basis are we buying it, cause it's not a, it's it's not a single option that I've heard, right?
Right, I guess, I guess I'm, I'm feeling like the financing, again, we're gonna be able to. Discuss that along the way when we have an actual, here's a piece of equipment that we'd like, right, so, so, okay. I just was thinking, I was hoping we weren't going back to, oh, no, let's go back and look at renting, I just wanna make sure we're clear. That we are, we are making a decision tonight to go ahead to attempt to purchase an excavator.
Defer to Randy on what he thinks about.
Well.
Renting is a feasibility.
And the motion that's on the floor is, are we gonna purchase? So I think we've discussed that and I I guess I'm just wondering if there's any other big questions that are out there, but go and take the vote. Okay, all those in favor of going out to bid to get an excavator, uh, we will follow the. Purchasing policy that we have and consider other options, you know, that's a good thing about the Sourcewell, just to. I'll bring, I'll bring that back up, we're gonna take a vote, we're gonna go, go out to bid. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. You are welcome to vote however you want to vote.
Aye.
My guess, yeah, I guess we're good.
Five oh.
I gotta head.
Thank you, thank you for the hard work, the good work.
Okay, that's, uh, we're, we done with this one now?
We're, we're done with this one now, I, although I do wanna just come one thing back to the Sourcewell.
Yeah.
We have to look at how Sourcewell would work within the context of our current purchasing policy.
Okay.
Because we, we are required to go out to bid for certain sized equipment, blah, 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 right?
And, yeah, we, I think that's right.
They might be able to say, yes, we will always get you three bids or whatever we need.
Right, but but we may also have to look at the purchasing policy, which is. Dated as is everything else, and do we really need to get three bids, can we get, you know?
Right.
And that's a whole different thing, and it may be, if we think we can save a lot of money with Sourcewell, we may have to revisit.
Yeah, I guess.
Words in the purchasing policy.
Right, 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 okay, cool.
Okay.
Let's talk about issue note, the next one, thirty minutes, discuss purchase and financing of the loader. Thank you, Rhonda, for trying to keep this on track.
That's okay.
Override that, um, okay, loader. What do we, what do we know about the loader again?
Wow.
I just hope Mike is still gonna be here for this part, um. I mean, I know the loader gets used a lot less than the excavator, um, obviously, it's very important in the wintertime to load trucks. Um, and is used other times to load trucks as well, obviously, um. I think the excavator. Be- because we have an excavator, it does. Take a little bit of use away from the loader, because it used to be cleaning ditches, they would use the grater. And then use the bucket loader to just clean up everything and dump it in trucks, now most of the ditch cleaning is done with the excavator. So, yeah, I mean. It would be great to somehow jog this, um. This clump of three big equipment purchases, pause on one of them somehow to. You know, that's just an idea, um. I don't know the condition, I don't know the hours, actually, the hours.
So, from the informational meeting, I did pull that slide setup. Um, it said that it was used year round for loading materials transfer. It had eight eighty-three seventy-one hours of service as of August. Um, so eight thousand three hundred seventy-one hours of service, and it was purchased in two thousand and nine. For a hundred and six thousand dollars, the normal lifespan is fifteen years. The estimate, estimated replacement cost was two hundred to two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And we estimated the optimal trade-in value to be thirty. And then the estimated annual payment range, as I created it back in. Uh, for the informational meeting, using the six-year, seven-year. Data that I had at the time at the conversation tables came out to thirty-four to forty-eight thousand dollars.
Sorry, thirty-four to forty-eight?
Yeah, and that big range again had to do with, well, it partially, mostly it had to do with the fact that nobody would give us a quote for a ten year. Loan at the time, um, which is, you know, um.
Yeah, because what we, for the loader, what we put in the town meeting was a twenty twenty-five. Sort of starting at thirty-three thousand, again, that excludes interest. Um, and that was a seven-year. A seven-year. Amortization line. Okay. Oh, that's better, oh, I've got it upside down. No, go ahead. No, no, it's, yeah, so, whi- which, you know, adding to the fleet in twenty twenty-nine, basically. And I think that looks like a typo. So adding to the fleet, that looked like the, that should be twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, there was, there was one typo on that page.
Yeah, that's it, and that's it, um. Anyway, so as far as our forward capital budget, that's what we were. That's what we were thinking. Oh, cool. Um, I just don't, I have, don't have a sense for what condition the loader is now. And can, can, can it, you know, can it?
Go a couple more years.
Yeah, at least one, if not two, I just don't have a. I don't have a sense for what the maintenance burden is on that machine versus other machines, because that's, you know, our, our repair and maintenance budget is. Ginormous, um, and I just don't know how much of that is captured by the loader versus other. Um, items, one of the things that hopefully when we get to budget, we'll be able to, to, yeah, get more information on, I haven't seen it. But earlier in the year, we talked about it, the files were set up so that Mike has. Files for each vehicle and then as things, maintenance happen. You know, yes, it comes up to Patty, we sign the orders, but you know, it goes in the file, like this is a new transmission for. Equipment, you know, A B C, so that stuff is in there, so we can at least start to figure out in that, in that. Repair and maintenance, how much is dedicated to certain pieces of equipment, so I I don't know if this is a a super pain point for us versus other things. And, you know, unfortunately, I don't have my own. So what to do on this one, discuss? So you only deal with M and T bank? Or is there other banks? Oh, I, this is, as far as I know, M and T bank's the only bank that.
Uh, somebody else actually stopped by one time when I was here in the town office, um.
Do you remember where they were from? These guys, I think.
Community bank?
Oh, yeah, I've heard of that.
Uh, did they have a, I think that's what it was, anyway, they stopped by and were being friendly with Patty and.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm, I'm sure, I mean.
These guys work with Dover and with other stuff, but.
Yeah, yeah.
You need a good organization, I, you know, Community Bank may be awesome, it's just something unfamiliar.
Yeah, I think they're, and I know, I believe they're up in Wilmington a- as a bank, but I, you know, I think they have other branches too, but all of that to say. Um, you know, with thi- this large equipment, we are limited and we can't use the, um. The loan equipment fund that the state has, because that only goes up to one fifty and you have to have twenty. The loan equipment fund that the state has, because that only goes up to one fifty and you have to have twenty-five percent of the cost and so on and so forth, but. And, you know, I think we originally started this game thinking, is there any way we can get? Bonds and the answer came back, we, we don't have audit, enough audit trail regularly enough that we thought that would be an option, so. The, um. I'm, I'm hearing, here's what I'm, here's what I'm sensing from you guys, and you can tell me if I'm, if I'm accurate. I'm sensing some discomfort. With spending money, um, which is a good thing. It's a very good thing to have, I also have this, right, and I, I just, I just happen to have a little more experience on the board to say like. You know, the heartburn gets lessened over time somehow. All of that to say. I, I, I really do think we should. Move forward with these, with these purchases. It, it, it might behoove us to try to do two at once, I mean, kind of keep things in sync and not have to deal with. One and then turn around and open bids for the other one the next time, I, I'm not really sure how the timing will best work for this. But I'm, I'm sensing a bit of fatigue on the board to discuss it even at this point. Um, and we don't have Mike here, which might have helped. Again, we got dealt a hand that is, hey, guess what, everything needs to be replaced right now, right? It's not, it's not the best. We, I think all of us would like to be thinking for longer term planning and spreading ca- cost out and. And co- and being able to really assess creative ideas, like can we rent for some piece of equipment, that kind of stuff, right? That long term. Capital plan or whatever it gets called, you know, has always. In our town than these equipment schedules and when they get. And when they age and, and people don't think three years ahead, because, you know. Because that's hard, um, it, it makes it, you know, it makes it a little more challenging. Uh, when we get into these crunch situations. You know, we could. We could say, hey, another thirty-four to forty-eight thousand dollars, again, that, those are probably high, because they don't. They don't factor in a lot of, a lot of other things, like they didn't have ten year loans, I'm just doing the calculation. Um, we could say, we don't wanna purchase it, we could say, we wanna go ahead and just under these together.
Yeah, I bet they wouldn't give you a deal.
Well, that's one thing I was wondering, that's right.
I don't, I mean, I know, I don't, don't, don't know that we've, don't know that we've asked the question quite, quite like that.
I think that they would, I'm using it as a dead, but I, I don't know that they would say, no, right? I mean, these people who work on these big equipment purchases may have some room for, you know, that kind of stuff, right? Yeah, right.
And again, the Sourcewell thing might be a.
Yeah, I think.
You know, we, we have also, uh. The two names, the two brand names that have come up tonight were Cat and John, and John Deere. I know there are a lot of other brands out there, as far as excavator, I mean, I've not run an excavator a ton, but I know that. Cat or John Deere would be the way to go. Preferably Cat with an excavator, but. There are a lot of other brands that make loaders, you know, like Case, J C V.
And when we put it off for bid, we don't care who, who meets the specs, right?
Right, yes. And of course, you want something that's quality, of course, but.
Yeah. Yes, and I mean, our, our, just so that you know, our purchasing policy does allow us to not always take the lowest bid if there are other considerations that we have. For meeting the needs of the town. So. Are we on time?
We got, um. We got a few more minutes.
Few more minutes?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna do a sort of the meeting management thing, which is to say, like, if, does anybody want to? Make a motion and move to move forward with the purchase of a loader at this time? If we don't do it now. It'll be on the agenda again soon, right? I mean, that's, this is one of the things is, we've been meeting. A lot. And we're, you know, the reason that we're having this is a separate meeting to discuss this topic is because you guys said we needed it.
Well, we do, we do need to get some things. You know, there's been a lot of. Quote unquote, kicking the can down the road on many things, and you do need to, certain things, uh.
Yeah.
Buckle down on, for sure.
Do you wanna make a motion that we go ahead to purchase a loader?
I can make the motion, um, and I'm gonna make it the same way, you know, with the same, I think. Caveat about the other one, we don't have to go forward with it if we don't like the. Um, proposals we get, but let's get the information, let's move forward with this planning effort, and I say. I make motion, we, you know, go to bid for a loader.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, so move a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I feel like with the bid, with the bidding process, we definitely should. You know, like I mentioned, uh, reach out to other vendors, other manufacturers.
Yeah, oh, that's absolutely.
You know, with, with input from Mike and Keith, of course.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the more we, the more we have, the better.
Yeah.
Yep. And I just spent several hours today working on an RFP, so I think I kind of have some of the. Some of the, um. Mechanics down of how to, how to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I just.
So I can do these whenever we're ready to.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, the motion carries five zero. Okay. Perfect, good work, everybody, getting through conversations. All right, what's up next?
Seven sixteen.
Seven sixteen, okay. New business, uh, review applicants for positions to bring in for interviews. I'm gonna try to get this done in about fifteen minutes. So we have, um, two candidates for the administrative assistant position. And. What, like. One of the things, if we had only had one, I probably would have said, let's just schedule, I wanna just make sure again, because we have to find the time. When we can get together, we can be done an executive session, um, and we can. We can refer to these applicants for the time being, uh, by, I think we had applicant A on one of them and applicant B listed on the other. Do you, did you guys copy that information and?
One of them's, one of them's a one pager and one of them's a two pager, so.
Right.
Who's A and who's B?
It's, it's the longer one that is applicant A. Mushroom sticky on there. Yeah, it just was, I thought it would be easier.
Okay, that's fair.
And, you know, do we wanna bring, uh, one or both of them in to, to talk to us about our needs for administrative assistant?
I'd be up for bringing them both in.
We should.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, no reason not to bring them both in.
Yeah, I mean, if we had six candidates and we had, um, you know, that might be fine, but I'm happy to do that. Um, I will be reaching out to you guys, um, as I have in the past. For meeting planning purposes to get some availability to do that, but I, I will look forward to talking to these individuals with this. In terms of. Highway Department, um, we have not received any application for that yet. I am going to, still within the budgeted amount that we talked about earlier, I just got asked. If we should do another week in the D V N. Which I think I will, sixty bucks or something. So I'll give that another week, I, I think I won't on the admin one, just, um, because we've spent money in the past and. That's a little bit. We have some candidates for that. Ask your friends. Winter's coming, we need another broker member. Um, and I will try to get into. Indeed. It's been on my list to try to get us set up in there and advertise in there as well. Um, okay, obtaining a ticket citation book is our next new business, Kyle Farnsworth has joined us, thank you for coming. I don't, the people online might not have, might not have known that. Um, and, uh. So. We have been. Looking at and speaking about updating some ordinances in town. And, um, ordinances would allow us to enforce. The ordinance with a ticket book if we had a ticket book, and it sounds like our ticket book is, is out of compliance.
I brought the old ones.
Okay.
Um, if you wanna look at them.
Yeah.
They actually don't have a date on them, uh.
Okay.
I would say, um, through looking at. Ones from our surrounding animal controls and constables, the, the newer ticket books are updated. So they're a little bit more user friendly, rather.
Okay.
Uh, but these here are the old ticket books that I got through the last constable.
Okay. So these are civil violation complaints?
So, yeah, that's what we would use for, um, if you've made like an animal ordinance, that type of thing, that we would be able to enforce that ordinance with that.
Okay.
Um, with these other, if we don't have these books, then there's no enforcement fact on any of the ordinances, so it's, it's all, uh. By law enforcement.
Tell me what the difference between the municipal violation and the civil violation complaints would be?
It's a great question, still figuring that out.
Okay.
I have, I have zero background on these ticket books, so I've been working the last since, actually, I talked with you, which was two days ago.
Yeah.
Three days ago or something.
Yeah.
Um, I've been back and forth with the judicial bureau.
Okay.
Quite. Couple times a day, trying to figure out exactly what we need and exactly how we get them.
Yeah.
Um, and it's kind of a, a process that is, uh, lengthy for someone that doesn't really. I, I just have no, like, um, I don't know where I'm looking. Training or, and or, uh.
You're dealing with a government agent.
Yeah, I don't know, I have no, uh, I can't think of the word I'm looking for, but, uh.
Yeah, the background, the background is.
Yeah, no, and when I took it was like, hey, this is how we get these ticket books, and then we didn't do it for like the first year, and so now I'm like, we're starting from scratch here, so.
I would say the municipal violation is probably like motor vehicle, like, thanks.
Yeah, now, I will say on the, the. They've updated the system since, so now when you go to order the ticket books, um, and I do have that in an email, which I'm more than happy to share at some point here. They now have them separated, so even on like the civil violation complaint books. You'll see a spot for like, uh, speeding fines and that type of stuff, that's all been redone, so that's its own book now. And now there's, you know, more specific books and more user friendly books for the things that we're looking for, because we're not looking to do traffic violations. We're looking to do, um, by law enforcement.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, one, one, yes, one, one second, I think getting, getting the municipal, I mean, getting the updated books to the extent. They're now lining up with whatever the current. Process is, is just gonna make things more seamless, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, and direct, rather than having these.
Right.
Books that they're outdated and.
We have to have, yeah, we have to have like some, somehow a connection to the town with a, with an ID. And that. Mindset is that had some, something to do with, um, if we don't have that, we, the select board needs to give you a letter or.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm still waiting to hear back on that, I just, as of like three hours ago, I just got the final email. That kind of gave me the outlook of all the books that we can get.
Okay.
Um, the two that we're looking for are the harder ones to get. Um, okay, so, the way I'm understanding it currently is I'm gonna need, thank you. I'm gonna need, um, a letter of endorsement, so to call it, from the select board that says, you guys acknowledge I'm Constable Animal Control.
Okay.
And give me the authority to write violations for the town.
Okay.
I mean, once I have that, then I can send that out to the judicial bureau, they can then put that in their system and then they can send the books over.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the cost of the books are yet, if there is any at all.
Okay.
There may not, yeah, there may not.
There may not be, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Uh, but it comes with the books and then the. Envelopes to send the tickets back to the judicial.
Okay.
It's all. So, so those go back, okay?
Yeah, so once the tickets are filled out, um, the town gets a copy, the violator will get a copy. And then the judicial bureau gets a copy, and so we just send them out right out in the mail. And they take care of it on their end, and then if they're not paid, that type of thing, it goes on taxes and. Like, so on and so forth, so it's just a way to be able to, if we're gonna have ordinances, be able to enforce.
Oh, enforcement is kind of.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Jenny.
Um, so, that's the new trained ACL? He's been trained as an ACL?
No, uh, there's, there's, he is our animal control officer, but they just changed. The, um, they just changed the law and there's now a distinction. Uh, between the trained ACOs and the untrained ACOs. And my understanding is that there is, while they changed the law. There is not actually, the training is not actually finalized, so I don't, don't know how they're gonna get anybody into that space.
Oh, you probably have the.
The difference would be elected and appointed.
Hmm.
I'm appointed.
Okay.
So, um, appointed ACOs and constables are not law enforcement.
Okay.
Uh, elected are law enforcement officers.
Okay.
And elect, yeah.
Okay.
That, that's the difference there, so the training's really up to the town on what they want me to be trained on.
Okay.
Um, I have taken ACO courses through V L C T.
Yeah.
Um, like, there's like three or four of them, I have completed all of those.
Okay.
Uh, as well as, uh, one of our surrounding town ACOs, I mentored a little while there.
Okay. Okay, cool.
So, so, um, I'm surprised at that, actually, um. So what kind of ordinances, like the ordinance books? Are you looking at that you don't have? Am I asking the question wrong? Um, it sounded like, it sounded like he was. Looking for. Some kind of books that he hasn't gotten yet, ordinance books or something, I mean, you know, because there is a problem, you know, there is a problem here. With certain. Dogs, you know, and cats, um, and I've gone through this before with the other, last ACL. And, um. I don't even know if those people got a ticket. I mean, this went to court, you know?
We. Can answer that.
Okay, go ahead, Kyle.
Um, they definitely did not, because the town still to today does not have an animal ordinance, you can't enforce something that doesn't, isn't there.
Yeah.
Well, there should be.
That's what this is about.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I talked to you before, a long time ago. Um, actually, and you never got back to me, yeah, you. Yeah. Uh, about a dog in the, um, neighborhood. And I'm right on Branch Road.
So, uh, you, and you know that Kyle is only been our animal control officer for.
Yeah.
A couple, a couple of months?
Right, but you send something online or something, um, and I spoke with you. I, I called you, actually. So, um, I mean, is there ever gonna be? You know, is there ever gonna be any type of ordinance when it comes to, say, a dog barking all the time? A, a dog that's out in all kinds of weather? Um, you know. Good, bad, and different things like that, I mean, because it's. You know, yeah. And I mean, I'm not, I don't wanna be a jerk, but it's, it's, it's been along many years with this, you know, and. Um, you know, I have a, my, I have a dog, everybody probably knows I have a German Shepherd. You know, she's very well trained, um, has had extensive training. And it's gotten to the point where one of these, you know, one of the dogs, the dog on the road. Is her, is worrying her, you know? And I can't, I can't have that keep happening, you know, this is a very expensive dog. And, you know, I mean, um, I've worked very hard on her and with her and, uh. It doesn't seem like. You know, it's very for me in hell with you when it comes to this other person, you know?
Yeah.
Kind of fed up.
Okay, well, yeah, thank you for mentioning that, Jenny, um, I, 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 we do, we have had.
Welcome, no.
Yeah, so, to, to answer the question about the ordinance, which is the part that the select board, um, can answer. Is, we, we have had, um, other members of the community come to us and say that they also would like us to adopt. An animal control ordinance, we got as far as. Pulling the Vermont League of Cities and Towns ordinance template off. And unfortunately, all of those community members. And unfortunately, all of those community members who were interested in engaging on this and helping the select board. Come up with the, the things that we care about as a community. And then, you know, you fill in the blank for what the fine should be kind of thing. Um, as I like to say to people a lot, I don't know why. Cause I guess I like to say this, but like, I'm not sure people in Halifax are interested in an ordinance that would find people for dog poop.
Right? No, 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 no. I'm not either. I'm not, I'm not interested in anything like that.
You might just start that up. But um, but I will tell you that there, you know, that group of people has not been able to really get together and get. Get rolling on this and therefore the select board hasn't been able to get together and get rolling on it. We have a lot of stuff on our plate, unfortunately.
About half a dozen people. I mean, it was.
Yeah, but you know, I, I went through a lot with this. I really did, you know, and I went to the town with this. You know?
Okay.
Um, you know, and the other ACL went to other neighbors and, and spoke with them also. You know, um, so, you know, I don't care about dog poop. Don't poop in my yard, guaranteed. But, you know.
So I'm trying to separate out two, two different issues though. It sounds like you, you still have like an ongoing issue about animal control. That you might want to reach out to Kyle again on. So, but again, we don't have an ordinance, so it may be difficult for him to take any action. Secondarily, might I ask if you are interested in joining the other people who have said we should have an animal control ordinance? And I'll try to use that, uh, use that to kind of revive them and say.
Sounds like I might be the only one.
Well, no, you, no, we wouldn't make it, you can't put it all on one person. But if you, if you don't, yeah, if you don't mind. I would like to pass your name on to folks. Um, and then we.
I don't know if somebody's on the board that, you know, um, you know, I don't like. Stepping on other people's toes, especially my neighbors, you know?
Oh, sure.
And I hate this. I really do, I hate it. But at the same time, I guess I, I'm more interested in. You know, I'm wondering what is gonna, you know, go on about, um, you know.
Hmm.
Noise complaints about a fucking dog all the time, things like that, you know, so, you know. But I'm, I'm not gonna s- s- stress too hard over it, cause I know that um. There's, like you said, there's a lot of other things to worry about.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I appreciate you coming and bringing that to our attention.
And it, and it is something that we earlier in the year did spend quite a few meetings trying to get our arms around it. And I think the consensus at the time, um, I think it's still in play. Is that if members of the community could do some of the, some of the lifting, um, kinda early on, then we could be more responsive. Um, and so they, they.
What do you, what do you mean by that? What do you mean by doing like the lifting? What do you mean by that? I'm not quite sure what you mean.
Kind of pulling together what should the ordinance contain? Um, there were three or four people. And I think, I think the idea would be, I, and I would support, support it if you were interested. Um, if for Edie to put you in touch with some of the people who were, um, you know, out in front on that. And then, you know, I think that for you would be a good start to get.
Well.
Kinda get on the same page with them. You all ought to know each other. And I think, I think it helps, I think it helps everybody move it forward.
Yeah, no offense to anybody, you know, sitting in front of me. Um, but. I mean, this, like I said before, this was a pretty big thing. It went to court. You know, I don't know why the town didn't come right to me in the first place. You're like, hey, you know, we got somebody that went to. With somebody over an animal and um. I, I was right here. I've been right here the whole time. You know, uh, I don't know if the other people you're talking about have had problems with, with other animals or if it's just, um, you know. Something they wanna start rolling the ball on. But I mean, I've had, I've, I've been through it, you know what I mean? Um, so, I mean, I wish somebody had come to me after, uh, you know, all this time. But I don't know, town knew about it. It's kind of poo-pooed, I guess.
Um, I, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know, don't believe anybody on the select board or Kyle poo-pooed.
No, not Kyle, this is not Kyle. No, not Kyle.
This is the first, this is the first, I mean, I've only been on the board a couple of years, but this is the first I've heard.
Right.
Have been, had a, had seen your, you know, seen your name in a meeting. Um, but anyway, I, that's all neither here nor there. I think, you know, if you're, if you're amenable and wanna talk to some people who I think have the same concerns you do, um, I think that would help all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I want to circle us back to the ticket citation book. You're gonna, you're gonna give us more information on whether you need a letter of endorsement and what that might look like.
I've, as of about a couple hours ago, I got another email address from a person I've been talking to that said, okay, now go to this guy.
Okay.
And talk to this guy and he might be able to help you out. Um, they don't like have a line you can call. So it's all like, send an email, wait a day, send an email, wait a day.
Yeah.
Um. So I'm looking to find the right avenue and once I get there, we'll get there.
So seven thirty four Tristan.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tristan dropped.
Um.
He may come back.
Yeah.
Sorry Kyle.
Nope, you're totally good. Hundred percent working on that. We'll get an answer and hopefully some ticket books.
Okay.
I'm not sure if they're gonna require an ordinance to enforce before they give me the books to enforce said ordinances.
We, we do have ordinances on the books, um, that, um. We, for example, we have a junk ordinance, we have a highway ordinance. And so those, those are on the books, they are active. And right now they're not on our target list of something we would be, you know.
Well, except for the highway ordinance that.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, but, but we have stuff now. And um Tristan's.
Um, I will say, um, having. Being the guy that kind of takes the hit for not being able to do what we should be able to do.
Hmm.
Um, is rough. So being able to have people like um Jenny or somebody that is willing to come forward and write an ordinance. And just move this forward.
Yeah.
Um, I'm more than happy to work with them.
Okay.
I personally, um, between my job in my main job and, and ACL and, and constable.
Yeah.
Um, and zoning administrator.
Yeah.
I'm a little full.
Yeah.
To write said ordinances, but I'm more than happy to say, hey, in my experience, this is what's happening. This is what we need ordinance for, like. Loose dogs.
Well, and as you're talking to whoever it is that's.
There's like three of them at the moment.
Right, but whoever it is at some point saying, they say, oh, you know, cause you mentioned, well, is there an ordinance unless you have ABC, we're not gonna send you the book. Government guys will send you the book.
Yeah.
But, but ask them, well, do they have a sample ordinance?
Okay, VLCT does.
I was gonna say, before we go down that ordinance road, yeah, we've got, we've got model ordinances. It's really a matter of getting people together to look at the ordinance, read it and, and make some selections.
That was my next thing I was gonna say was anybody who's willing to write said ordinance. I've pulled all of our ordinances from all of our surrounding towns.
Oh, perfect, perfect, perfect.
Anybody that's looking for models, I've got them.
Okay.
I can give any sort of, some of them are a little more.
Whoa.
Involved than we need to get, personally, I feel. Um, but having them there in case is.
Well, that, that's awesome because the extent you and other members of the community can look at this and say, this is what, you know, at least as a starting point, right? This is what makes sense for our community.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I'm sorry.
And then we can take it, take it under advisement from there and move forward.
Yeah.
I don't know if this would help. Uh, I got a sister that's been ACL for over thirty years. Um, and I may be able to speak with her. I know that I did speak with her when I was having this problem. Um, with a neighbor. And, you know, they're, she's pretty rural where, you know, to where she is. But um, but it's also, you know, but it's big enough to have, you know. It, it's not as small as Halifax. It's, you know.
Sure.
But I could always speak with her and um, ask her, since it is a small place where she is also. You know, you got any ideas of?
Yeah.
You know, we got a new ACL and he's just a young guy. He's, you know, he's got a couple other jobs going on. Um, he's really cute. I'm old enough to be a mom, but. But at the same time, you know, I mean, I know it's, it's hard and, and like I said, um, I don't wanna be enemies with anybody. Especially my neighbors, you know, and, you know, I like them, but it's just. You know, the dog.
Yeah.
So I could always ask, you know.
I, yeah, thank you Jenny. I think I would hold on that until we can get the, the local group like committed to like, you know, meeting and, and starting that. Discussion, but thank you. I, I.
You guys should talk easier. How are, how are we gonna do this? Are you gonna get Jenny's info and introduce to the group or?
Um, my Halifax, my constable email.
Oh, yeah.
Is a great email to reach, that type of stuff.
Okay. Jenny, can you do, can you do an email?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have email? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so um, so Kyle's um email address is.
Halifaxconstable@gmail.com.
If you can just reach out to him, then we'll have your contact information and you don't have to share it right now. Um, you know, this meeting is being recorded.
Yeah, no, I know.
So, yeah, cool. Yeah, alright.
And I wanna, I wanna apologize if you have reached out and I did not get back to you. I do apologize on that.
No, I haven't. I haven't reached out. I, I to, I talked to you once. Um, it was like in the beginning of you starting this. Um, but yeah, no worries. Um, I didn't reach out and you didn't get back to me, so don't worry about it, kid.
Okay.
Was it Gmail?
Yeah, Halifaxconstable@gmail.com.
Okay, great. We have kind of segwayed in. If we're done with ticket book, please catch up to this soon. And we'll be, we'll be happy to try to keep that moving. Um, we've kind of segwayed a little bit into hearing of visitors unless you have anything else, Jenny?
No, I, I don't have anything. My life is pretty dull and empty.
Alright, thank you for joining. Well, there's always select board meetings for you to come to.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Alright, thank you. And then Nancy, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Kyle, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Steph, nothing else? Okay, Bob, Bob Tari, welcome. You have some things to tell us, I believe.
Correct, Bob?
Uh, I, I believe you said that you were going to read uh my email into the minutes and that's, that's all, right, I'm, you know, I would like.
Okay, normally hearing of visitors is the visitors sharing their perspective. Um. I, I would prefer it if you would do it. If you, if you will not, I will, because I said I would.
Reading a correspondence is, is pretty routine. Consider a correspondence.
I would like to state that if the resident is here who has sent the correspondence, can they say what's on their mind? I don't, I think, think the select board. Uh, has an obligation to sort of read something that a resident is at the meeting sent.
And, and, and I, 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 I agree with that, Tris. And I think in the past, things have happened and, and residents have. Asked the board to do things, but if they're not able to sort of speak to it themselves, I think it makes it a little difficult. Um, for the board, um, and certainly others who are listening in or will listen to the recording to really. Understand what's happening. So Bob, if you could, if you don't wanna read every single word because that, I've got a twenty page email. Today, I guess is the email string that most of us who were on it. Um, but if you wanna hit the highlights so that we have them for the record, Bob, that'd be awesome.
Okay, I'm, I'll, I'll try to keep it brief. The main point is, I think, twofold. One is, um, there have been two events that. Primarily, uh, Mike Fornier and Edie Edwards have um come after me for two things that frankly. Are fictitious. One was taking pictures of our gravel pit. I'm sorry, not a gravel pit, our gravel reserves uh back. In March. The second one is. Coming after me without contacting me, but to putting me on two select board meetings. And escalating it yet to another level involving town council regarding the replacement of my culvert. Uh, the main issue here is I have a great respect for laws, regulations, open meeting law. And Mike Fornier, multiple years ago, explicitly. Told me that I can replace my culvert. Um. Myself. Or the town can replace the culvert. But that the resident, you know, has to supply the culvert. So not only have I invested a thousand dollars in my culvert. I did essentially thousands of dollars worth of work to install. Uh, those same culverts. And this is the second time. Um. No new curb cut. I'm the only resident on a one mile road. It's a very dangerous road, one of the most dangerous roads I'd say in Halifax. In terms of windy, lots of trees. I moved my culvert to make my um entering and exiting my driveway safer. For everyone who uses it, deliveries, uh, plowing, trash. I was unable to leave my driveway with my truck without having to make a multi-point turn. And my driveway is at the kind of the base of the steepest part of the one mile Stark Mountain Road. Um, I've had many instances where. Mud season and, you know, snowy and icy conditions where people have literally locked up their brakes. Because I'm trying to pull out onto the road. Um, it seems as though the town has absolutely no concern about my safety. Or those people who use my driveway's safety. And I believe my letter outlines all of the false railroading claims that. Unknown people have made that I believe that Mike Fornier and Edie Edwards are inventing problems. Out of thin air. Um, and make, you know, claims that people are driving off the road and I'm, you know, have no concern for safety and blah, 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 blah. But the real issue is I moved my culvert to make it safer for not only me, but the town. And I no longer have to make a multi-point turn to turn on my drive, to, to get out of my driveway, trucks, box trucks. Uh, plow trucks, trash trucks, uh, you know, large pickups can get in and out of my driveway now because I fixed it. I paid for it. I saved the town thousands of dollars in labor. Um, I had to get this done before the winter. I did not. Want to bother the road crew with this request. Um, and, you know, net-net, I've saved the town lots of money, lots of hassle in a busy part of the season. Um, and, you know, I don't flout rules and regulations. I simply replaced my culvert and extended my culvert. Maybe another ten to fifteen feet to make it wider. So I could actually get in and out and I shifted it down a, a little bit to avoid three trees that you can see in the videos. And the photos that I've supplied in my letter. Um. And so it's safer for all concerned right now. Um, and I also would like to formally request, since you guys are blaming me for safety problems that don't exist. To remove those three trees once and for all. And other trees on Stark Mountain Road that require. Oncoming traffic to stop dead in their tracks to allow one car to pass slowly past the other. There are multiple sections of Stark Mountain Road that are incredibly unsafe that require one car to stop so the others can pass. One of those spots. Was directly across from my driveway. Um. You know, a, and there's le- less than eight feet from the center line to those trees. So i- i- it's an incredibly narrow portion of the road. My side of the street is far. Wider from the center line than the other side of the street, which I don't control. It's not my land, those aren't my trees. I've asked the Swansons, you know, they, I, I've confirmed with them that they are totally amenable. To the town removing those three trees. Um, I would encourage Mike Fornier and the select board to reach out to. To, 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 to the Swan, to, to, um, to the Swansons to remove those three trees and make the road safe. And any other trees that Mike knows full well are, are the problem trees on Stark Mountain Road. It's a very dangerous road. Every winter I tow, tow for free. Many people off of that road, out of ditches, up the hill because they can't get up the steepest part. So. I've saved the town money, but the town is wasting time and money coming after me as retribution for my public records request. And this is the second time that the town has done so, primarily Mike Fornier and Edie Edwards. My records re- request, um. And my research are showing that the town has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. Year to year in excess purchases of gravel, sand and diesel that far, far, far. Uh. That are far, 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 far higher than our neighboring towns Marlboro and Guilford that are very similar towns. And that research I will supply to you, you know, when it's triple checked. And I hope that those cost. that cost aid will help guide you guys when you're in your budgeting process to, you know, really rein in costs that are simply out of control. Very much out of control. Numbers don't lie, people do. Um, and I do not like being railroaded for public records requests. Um, I don't like being befuddled with all kinds of open meeting things and stuff and jibber jabber. I saved the town a lot of money. I made my driveway much safer for all involved, including the town, but mainly people coming and going. And it's weird, the town doesn't really care about saving money. They care about coming after me for my public records request. So that's it. But all the details and the specific open meeting violations are all in the letter. And I would, I I would suggest that, you know, you read that and um there are just, there's a lot to discuss. There's lots of open meeting violations. There's retribution, retaliation for my public records request. Um, and it's just, you know, it's just, it's sad. It's, it's sad that that happens in a town that I pay a lot of taxes for. Um, and I can't even replace my own culvert, even though Mike Fornier allowed me to do so before. So.
Well, thank you.
I was operating on precedent.
Thank you, Bob. Um, appreciate you bringing this up. Sorry?
I said I was just operating on a precedent before the snow comes to replace my own culvert. That's it, nothing, innocent. And the railroading that occurred in the meeting minutes that were, I would say, destroyed that I, since the meeting last, the last meeting was pretty astounding from what I heard from people that were on the call. And the misstatements in the written minutes that have been published are completely not accurate and do not um abide by the recording that is now lost, destroyed. The people I've spoken with said that the, the, the meeting last Tuesday was indeed being recorded. They remember seeing this meeting as being recorded. And it was very, very clear that, you know, it was destroyed and the written minutes do not match what actually transpired, what actually transpired in the open meeting. So.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Bob.
So, that's it. I mean, I don't, you know, th- there's a lot of issues and I, you know, I don't want to waste any more of your time. You have the documents. I just urge you to kind of review those and revise the meeting minutes for those two meetings to make them accurate and concise and let them reflect reality and not you're railroading me. So. That's it.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for your input on that. As I stated at the beginning of the meeting, it was completely an, an error that I made as a human being not to click the button to say record. I have tried to figure out if there's a technical solution for that. Um, but regardless of that, I I want to just note um for uh for the record, the minute, the minutes that are posted now are draft. The select board will be reviewing them and updating them. And remember that the minutes have to be a reflection of the of the conversations that were important that were had. It is not intended to ever be a transcript. Um, and that is, you know, we, we take minutes according to what we legally have to, including recording our um motions and overpass. Excuse, excuse me, Bob, I'm talking.
Outright lies and misstatements.
But Bob, the people who, the people who were at the meeting who will approve the minutes, I am sure will take a look at them thoroughly. If a statement was made, whether you believe it was fact or not, if the statement was made and it is part of the record, then, you know, we're not, we're not debating the, the veracity of, of the, uh, of the records. We are trying to state what was said at the time. The minutes will, we will review them thoroughly tomorrow. I ask everybody to take some time to do that. That's fair. Um, and um.
For one, there's been no visits to my property, and that was actually confirmed in the meeting. But the written meetings, the written minutes state that people visited my property, but yet I was told that the opposite was actually stated in the meeting, that no one had yet gotten to my site visit. So that's just an example of an.
Hey, Bob. On, I do actually, it's sort of interesting you mentioned that. I do, I do recall the, and I haven't seen the draft minutes yet, but I do recall that did come up and people that have someone been there. And I may have been the one that said, no, I haven't. We sort of looked back and forth, and then the conversation was, yes, in fact, people did go. And I, not, I don't believe anybody visited your property, but I do believe that they went to the town right-of-way just outside of your property. So if we're going to be specific, I'd like to make sure that you understand that is what happened. Nobody is trying to persecute you. We don't have time to persecute you. Nobody is looking to um get retribution for FOIA requests. A FOIA request is a perfectly legitimate request. And you are provided through the appropriate channels, everything you've asked for. So those are very, very different things. What we are trying to do is understand um how our roads are treated, how our roads are put in and out of passable code. And if I may, Edie, I'm just a little confused why you just didn't go get a drive, a permit. All we need is a permit.
By precedent before to replace my culvert. So that, that's, that, that's, that's, that's the crux.
The precedent. Wait a minute, let me, let me understand. Let me understand. Bob, let me understand.
Let me just make a comment that I would like that the temperature of the meeting needs to come down at this point. I think that we've heard the concerns from one person's perspective. We certainly will be addressing this in a future meeting. Um, I, I, I feel that the process to get to a more uh a more useful understanding of the situation has been laid out to Bob, and I expect that Bob can help us get to that point. Um, I appreciate having people come, uh even if I believe there are misstatements. I am not prepared to spend time with that today. It wasn't on the agenda. I am prepared to note that we as a board are doing our best to try to make sure that the conditions on that road are what we need them to be before winter.
No one's identified a defect in safety, no one. No one has identified a physical defect of a safety problem. And, okay, so Rhonda and Mr. Mr. Pike did. The minute.
Can we please mute the round that's talking over the select board members?
Okay. The minute Randy Pike and Rhonda Ashcraft visited my property, is that true? Can you guys both confirm that in open meeting?
We were in the road.
We did not, uh, we did not go to your property. We were in the town right-of-way.
Right.
Okay, when? Because my security video doesn't show any visits, any stopping, any measurements, no photos, nothing.
And so the point, the points I would like to make here is that, Bob, the point I would like. The point that I would like to make here is that.
Of courtesy. It's rude. It's rude. It's persecutory. It's retaliation for my public records request.
I di- I disagree with you. I thank you for stating that. I, I, I believe, I believe that this hearing of visitors is to be finished at this point. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
We are going to continue to have conversations about this as necessary. Um, and uh I, I do, I do want everybody to understand, we are all trying to get to the same point here. And let's, let's see if we can try to work together to do that. Uh, but the select board is going to consider this at a future meeting. Um, and it will be properly warned as they all are.
And Bob and the rest of the town, I apologize for raising my voice and trying to be heard.
Yeah, like likewise, likewise, and no one's apologized for not contacting me out of courtesy, out of respect for a taxpayer, a resident, that.
One of the.
Questions, Mike Fornier never contacted me, zero. So, I mean, that's rude. It's disrespectful. Very disrespectful.
You've made your point, Bob. And now it's time to be respectful. It's time to move on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time. I wish you guys weren't wasting.
I didn't catch the last part, but that's okay. Okay, any other hearing of visitors?
Good. And that's, that's seven, seven fifty-eight.
Okay, um. Uh, we have two more things that we had added to the agenda, which were brief items, RFP for Hatch School. That's you, Karen?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so I pulled together the RFP, um, and there, there's a couple of dates, and I just want to see if we can, if we have time, and I'll have to, I'll confirm with Mike. But I think the earliest that we could ask for bids and get bids for Hatch School, um, which we have the grant for, is December third. As, you know, it being a regular meeting, is the December third meeting, and the reason being is that prior to that, we have to have a mandatory pre-bid meeting onsite at Hatch School, so.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
So we would need to send out the bid letter, and I would, after talking to Mike, I'd love to get it out, and I'm already a couple of weeks late. Uh, would love to get it out this week, but that's sort of the operative operative dates are, we'd have to have a mandatory pre-bid meeting with all of the bidders onsite at Hatch School Road sometime mid-December, and I'd like to be able to give, you know, sort of a couple of weeks after that so they can formulate the bid. The scope of work and pictures I received from V-Trans. So we have all of that information, but it's really just, is December third okay? And then I'll work back with the relevant dates with Mike to open a bid for Hatch School.
Yes, that sounds fine. I'm gonna put it on my agenda compilation that we're going to do that on December third is a bid opening. Is that correct?
Yes, and that will light a fire under me.
They have to go well into December. It just became November, didn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, I just don't think we can do anything beforehand and still give them time to come and do their thing. And one of the only thing that I've added, just so you guys know, to the information that V-Trans provided is I inserted a condition asking that they notify us two weeks before they're gonna start work so that we can notify the Conservation Commission about the beaver deceiver that they're gonna move, and they need at least a week to move that beaver deceiver. So they'll move it out of the way. It's gonna have to be updated to fit this larger culvert. Um, but a resident and the, a resident paid for that and the commission. Several thousand. So anyway, that's the only difference um that I put in here as far as a, a condition. Um, and I will talk to Mike about, um, you know, road, mandatory road closers. We did have a bit of a conversation at the last at the last meeting, but those are the only open issues, but hopefully then I can get this out. Um, and then Edie, do you have a PDF of the purchasing policy? I was not able to find one, you know, that has all the signatures?
Maybe somewhere.
If not, it's in the book and I'll just.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Don't worry about it.
I may have it somewhere back.
Yeah, don't, don't worry about it.
Uh, and then the last item was a uh future meeting request and some correspondence. I know we're meeting tomorrow, and I don't put things on the agenda um urgently, um unless there's an urgent reason to do them. I'm not sure this is, this is gonna be urgent. Um, I haven't gotten back to them. I just got this a little bit ago. Um, but apparently um DV Fiber is looking to ask about an underground easement located in Moss Hollow Road between Halifax and Marlborough. Um, they have, they have made that as a change to their original plan because of uh some easement questions with the landowner. And they were looking to do this work soon, like in November. Um, apparently there was a discussion between the contractor and our highway supervisor. I haven't had time to talk to him about this, and he was, he was saying that uh I know, we're kind of at the end of the season for road work um until next spring. So what she's asking is.
This is a resident or?
No, this is DV Fiber.
Okay.
The people who are running. It's sort of like getting the request from GMP, right?
Right, yeah.
And she was sort of saying like, is there any room for negotiation on the dates and stuff? And I, all I said, what I, all I planned to say is we could discuss this at the meeting tomorrow potentially, um with an addition to the agenda. But I don't have design, I know, like, and I can ask.
I think tomorrow's gonna be too soon, given the election and and.
Yeah. So, um, so I'm happy to get back to her and just say like, at this point, the next scheduled meeting is.
Well, doesn't she just need to do a town right-of-way permit? And this is an underground?
Well, that's a good.
Thing. That, that's what this is, because you can't go underground. Is this a paved road or an unpaved?
Unpaved, unpaid.
So even if it's underground, whether it's paved or unpaved, we're the town right-of-way permit is specific.
Okay, cuz, cuz again, I.
And that's a ten-thousand-dollar ticket to, for the, for the, um, and if DV Fiber wants to foot it, is this part of our connectivity program? Or is this outside the connectivity program?
This is, this would be for the main, well, that's an interesting question, but, but um yeah, I mean, it's, it's an un, it's, did I say it was a paved road? It's an unpaid road.
But I don't think, I don't think it matters.
I don't, I don't, for, for.
It's an unpaid road, right?
I imagine, I have no idea. I imagine this is like straight down the road, kind of like what GMP is doing. All that to say, um, I will ask her to fill out the permit. Um, I, I, I know, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make any promises that we can get to it and get this done in the timeframe that she's looking for. And just say like, you know, here's, here's where we go from here in this. Um, and I know I would want to work with. Hate it when that happens. I, yes, everybody check, everybody else check where your phone is right now, because we're all doing the same thing.
Yeah, let's, let's, we, I don't think it tomorrow, we, I think, given the timeframe that we have voting.
I will put her, I will put, I will put her down that we are really not planning to meet until.
She does the permit, though.
Yeah, but have her, have her get the permit from Patty, which has addendum A and addendum B specifically related to what we did for DV Fiber.
Yeah.
This is identical stuff, and I can email it to you if you want to email it to her.
Yeah, that'd be great. Actually, it'd be easier.
I will do that.
But to add to that, I mean, what Mike did say, it's getting late in the season, so that's gonna have to be a discussion.
Yeah.
Right, Mike, Mike's, yeah.
And I, I will say that at some point, I, I would like to have a um a road commissioner discussion about the work that GMP has done. I heard some very positive things about it from a resident, but I also have some questions about um the level of effort that actually was put onto our road crew, which I kind of wasn't anticipating.
Right.
Um, so I think we should talk about that at another meeting as well. Okay, so we've, we've covered those extra items. Any other business? Like to make, um, take a motion for adjournment if somebody would make one?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
My second.
Motion has been made and set into adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Eight oh six.
Tristan, we get an aye from you on that? Tristan's got a baby with him. Well, she carried four zero.
Four zero works.
Four zero works. There he is.
Thank you very much.
We will, we will see folks tomorrow. See folks tomorrow for our, our next meeting. Thank you so much, everybody. We'll have a, have a great evening.
Thank you, everybody. And then we can, recording ended?
Yeah.
Yes, recording ended.
We gotta hit the record and. Well, I think the record end will happen automatically if you, if you close the meeting without doing it. But I will do it as well.